All right, good evening. I would like to call the Monday, August 28th, 2023, school board meeting to order. Lisa, will you please call the board?
Director Claflin, here. Lala Bertie, here. T. Felton, here. Weber, here. W. Felton, here. Director Hume is absent. Chair Roche, that's six present.
Thank you. And if we could rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the fiscal liberty and justice program. All right, welcome everyone. We've got a few people in the audience tonight. Before we get to some of our business items, I will ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening, as well as the committee of the whole and regular meeting minutes from August 14th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Well, we opened tonight with our quality in action. We've got our building principals here tonight to provide some highlights for the upcoming 2023-2024 school year. None of my principals are rising quickly to this. Come on down.
Good evening.
How's everybody doing?
Good.
Good, 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 good. Teresa has an announcement to make here that we all know, but we have a special guest here tonight.
We do, for those watching may not know, right? So I am here tonight to introduce you, Jen Saxhauer, who is new assistant principal at Lincoln Center. Yes, we're very excited and I'm excited. So I don't know if you want to talk about anything you're looking for?
Yeah, so Jen Saxhauer, I've worked in the district since 1999. I taught at Lincoln for 16 years and then I worked in other roles. And yeah, I'm just excited to come to Lincoln in a new capacity and work alongside Teresa and learn from her. So really excited to stay in the district doing a whole new role. So, thank you.
Excellent.
Great.
Very exciting.
It's fun Jen brings this level of credibility with her when she works with staff because she's had that longevity here. And then just in our opening, working with teachers today, just, you know, the way she presents herself and talks with staff, everybody leans into what she has to say, so it's going to be an outstanding partnership. I'm really looking forward to that this year, so.
Fantastic.
All right.
You can go first.
Okay. So one of the things that Terry and I, we're tag teaming this, then this partnership is we just really wanted to thank the district and the school board in particular for just your investment in our kids and teachers and curriculum the last five years, from math expressions that we received five years ago to the seven pallets of amazing reading curriculum that showed up this week on wit and wisdom that we have been busy unpacking and we're going to spend two days learning about with teachers. So as administrators have already gone through an initial training, but we are just super excited. The beautiful books, the beautiful materials, all of the things that kids are going to, like all students in the building are going to have access to this quality grade level curriculum. And so we're just super excited and just wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, it's really exciting. From having everyday math for about a dozen years to having benchmark literacy for about that same time span. The new curriculums are just, we're so excited to have both of them. So thank you so much for that. We're also super excited about the level of SEL support that we have in buildings too, from social workers to school psychs at each site. I know you know this, but school counselors, additional student support assistants too, who are kind of boots on the ground in the building, making sure to manage student behaviors too. So I've said this before, but it keeps getting better. I feel like we're better supported in the SEL world than we ever have been before. Also just increased supports for academics as well. We both have kind of bolstered intervention teams, instructional coaches now in the building and the district coach that was, that started last spring too. So as far as positioning to continue the success that we saw last spring, we feel like we're in a really good spot. So it was fun to kind of introduce that all to staff today, to put it in a big picture. And you could really just kind of see spirits lifted. I mean, Monday after summer is tough anyways, right? I think Nikki alluded to it. And so we had really a lot of fun this morning, just reconnecting and welcoming our new staff. And Teresa's going to talk about her day today.
Yeah, so Lincoln Center welcomed 25 new staff members. And so in lots of different positions. That does also include four new deaf, hard of hearing staff. That's part of our 917, which are very included in our building. The recap of our morning, we just, we had a great three and a half hours together. And a lot of it is just looking, we set team norms and looking at goals that we want to work toward this year. And so one of the books I'm reading to students is called I Promise. And it's like, I promise to bring my best self each day. And so we did some work around that with staff as well and saying like, this is, this is the year. Every year in education, we get to say, this is the year. And we get to take the things that were really successful last year and then just make more improvements for this year. And then another thing that we're really committed to at Lincoln Center is to make it the most inclusive school, where children can participate in everything. And so we're really looking at areas where maybe sometimes during a choice time, someone might not get to participate, but we're going to take that away and you're going to get to do all the things every day. And then we're going to put in supports in place to make sure that kids can do that, so.
And I love your statement here too, that LC will be the most inclusive school, where all children participate and feel part of our school. And I was going to say, hey, Capoja's going to be the most inclusive school. Where all children participate and feel part of our school, school community. But it was a lot of focus on that today. Education's been tough the past few years and it's been hard on educators, hard on teachers, hard on kids, hard on families. And we've seen it and we've felt it in the elementary. And so today, what we did with 20 new staff members, years ago, I performed this kind of personality, personality inventory with teams. So it's really a hard look at who you are as a person and what your defaults are, what your strengths are, when you enter into any kind of collaborative situation. And so everybody on the fourth grade team, fifth grade team, special ed, they all participated in this color inventory because we have a lot of newness, 20 new staff. And it allows us to look at what we bring to the table from a strength perspective. And really knowing like each day, it could be hard, but let's honor each other, let's honor our strengths and let's use that to create community and continue to progress with our kids. So we did that today. We also, I took a trip to Seattle this past summer. And if you've ever been to Pike Place, they have this fish philosophy, right? And every summer I kind of go off and I think like, what would my theme be? What is my theme song? What t-shirt? What am I going to bring back to staff? And this year it was the fish philosophy, which was a lot of fun this morning. So I'd bought this like three foot long like trout and we threw it around because that's what they do at Pike's Place to introduce staff and to greet one another. But it really is about the workplace for staff. They have four tenants and that, can we be there for each other? How do we make each other's day? How do we play at work together? And how do we choose our attitude? And so those four tenants will kind of run throughout the entire year when we get together in staff meetings and talk about how's it going, because tough times do happen, but how can we be there for each other? And then it was about how we can translate the fish philosophy with our kids too. And there's like primary and intermediate inventories for kids too, that we're going to allow teachers to use in their classroom. So it was a lot of fun just kind of meeting new people and the forming of new teams. As someone who's been around for a long, long time, when you get new people in, it is fun to have people with gifts and talents that can just make us better. And your theme?
Yeah, so our theme this year at Lincoln Center is Just Read. It's pretty simple and it's something that we are, kids are going to have a book with them all the time, on their desk during transition times. And it's a way for us to practice and context all the isolated skills that Lincoln Center kids are so good at. But they need more time to practice it, to get better at it in that kind of larger scope of I can be a better reader. And so you will see us with our t-shirts on, Just Read, and then all students with books all the time.
And we started with, well, if you've seen my newsletter, and again, I'm sure you read that every Friday, 30th anniversary of Capoja opening its doors. And so we are spending some time to reflect back on all the awesome educators that have traveled through and all the kids who have come through. We have a local historian in Aubrey Wright. He is an intervention teacher and he has provided me with pictures and details from the past that we're going to put in the newsletters. And our t-shirts will be on the back, they'll say 30 years of being awesome. So we're excited to celebrate who we've been and who we can become in the future. So that's our update.
I hope you're going to invite some of those
You got it.
30-year teachers that were, that helped in opening the building.
We actually have five people.
That would be so fun.
Yeah, five people at Capoja who are still working in the district, who are still there in the hallway. So it's super cool. So we'll keep you up to date.
Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you so much, thanks.
Hi there.
Hi.
Greetings from the middle school, where we had a lovely day and I brought a little prop. All the middle school staff are a bunch of lucky ducks. And every middle school staff member got a duck today. They have numbers on the bottom and they have various disguises. I think this one is dressed like Paul Revere. But our staff are lucky ducks because we get to work with the students that we get to work with and we get to work with each other. And Andrew Barter, the new assistant principal, and I will draw numbers, because every duck has a number on the bottom, draw numbers each week and the staff member will win fabulous prizes. The other thing that is super interesting about our ducks is they do have disguises on and some of them are actually goose, first stands for get out of school early, where Andrew and I will sub for them in whatever position they have. And they will get to actually probably stay in school, but get out of their classroom and do some prep, some grading, connecting with families, but just lend special time to them to do whatever they want. And if they choose that, we could also co-teach with them. But I get to facilitate a fantastic building instructional leadership group. And they came up with a slogan or a theme for this year at the middle school, creating a community through connection, content, and celebrating achievement. And so everything we do this year will be about helping students connect with each other, connect with adults, connect with the content and really dig into the knowledge and skills that we have to offer and then also celebrate their achievements along the way. And so we're going to continue doing some things like interdisciplinary projects where students go to junior achievement and Biz Town. We're going to continue some policies and practices that help students focus on their learning and make progress in the yonder pouches for their cell phones. And we are going to add in instructional coaches and an instructional framework for lessons that the district has moved forward. And we're really thinking that the uniformity seen in every classroom will help students achieve more. And so we're just really excited to get the year started. I, I think that I had, Teresa said 25 new staff members. I'm right around there as well at the middle school and gave them a tour on Thursday afternoon, all the new staff members. Fantastic mix of, you know, new to career and, you know, 20-year veterans that are really helping each other. And to see some of those teachers, the, the young teachers showing some of the more experienced teachers how to work technology and the experienced teachers talking about how to be really mindful and setting up flexible grouping was, it warmed my heart. Because these people that are coming into our building love students, they love the craft of teaching. And they're going to join some of the best teachers I've ever seen that we've returning from last year. And I, I know that it's going to make a difference for all of our students. So that's what we have going on in the middle school.
Sounds awesome.
Thank you.
Don't forget your duck.
Thanks.
If your number gets pulled, you know.
School board chair, Roche, school board, greater school community. The first thing I want to do is apologize to the teachers at South St. Paul High School. For those of you that don't know, my name is Chuck Ochaki and I'm clearly not as fun as everyone else. I don't have a fish to throw, I don't have a duck to pull a number from. We just got down to business today. And really what it is, is our, our theme or our goal every year is improving our students' experience. And so looking at our data from last year, once again, I had the opportunity of working with a bunch of educators who came in, gave up summer hours to come in and say, here are some concerns, here are some issues that we see in the building. How do we come together to address those issues? So one of them was academic honesty policy. The IB organization actually highlighted that as one of the things that we needed to work on. And so a committee got together, talked about it. We have a new, new practice that we're going to roll out to our staff, to our students that I'm excited about. We have really dug into how we want our kids to learn or how we want to design the lessons every day for learning. And that was an entire committee that just met to talk about what is the classroom supposed to look like? And really what we've designed is a classroom where the first 30 minutes are crucial to what is happening within the academic hour of that time. The next 20, 30 minutes is really about helping kids achieve. And so we redesigned kind of how we do stuff. And so today our teachers got a glimpse of it because every lesson that I taught, I actually followed the same process. I'm a big fan of model the behavior that you expect. So the committees that met, academic honesty, designing lessons for learning, and then two of my favorite committees, right? Or probably two of the ones that you've heard the most about here in South St. Paul's schools, White Win Wednesday and bathrooms. So let's really talk about what we're going to do. So the Win Wednesday committee met and really we've designed, we've continued to design a program that will better suit all the needs of all of our kids, improving all of our students' experiences. And so there is, like I could go through the eight different things that we're going to do, the really important things you need to know, right? C and lower, you're coming to school. C plus and higher, you're able to work at home. Work at home is actually extension. Every kid's going to have extension work that they need to do to continue their learning, whether they are in school or not. And so we've really, our teachers are going to create folders on Wednesday that actually talks about additional support for the kids who need to come in and extension folders for those kids who have the opportunity to stay at home, right? This is an area that we knew we were missing, the extension piece for our high flyers who are continuing to move forward. Survey data clearly stated that. The other big thing that we've talked about were bathrooms, student passes, and passing time. And so it is, in fact, again, teachers, I'm sorry, because you're hearing this from them first, we didn't actually have time to talk about it. But we're going to say student passes, no student passes for the first 30 minutes of class. Why the first 30 minutes of class? Because that's where the learning is taking place, the actual, here's the direct instruction. Now, that's going to be an overall, obviously there's going to be exceptions. We're going to open the bathrooms 30 minutes after class starts and they will remain open the entire hour and the next passing time, right? So we want our kids in class, get that direct instruction from our experts. When you go into active learning time, then obviously you'll be able to use the bathroom. The only thing I'm married to is my wife Dana. And so all practices that we have at South St. Paul High School, right, is that. It's a practice. If something's not working, then know that we will go back to the board and, not you guys, the board, but the board of my office, right? And redesign again. So questions I'm sure that you have?
I know, I was pretty clear.
I know this was a question last year, in what bathrooms or is it all bathrooms, will the hygiene products be available?
In the gender neutral bathrooms right now and they'll be unlocked, the ones right by the front door. Yep.
Be curious to hear how that.
Yeah, so the other really exciting part, and I know Dr. Zambrino talked about it, is I have a principal advisory group, right? So now we're going to have students who are going to help us also decide. So we as adults came up with what we think is a good plan for our kids and now we're going to run it and then the kids will tell us what they think of our plan for them, so. All right, anything else?
Principal Ochaki, did you say all bathrooms will be opened?
Yep, in the high school.
Right.
Yes, all bathrooms.
Are we kind of giving a little ownership to students and kind of teaching them and telling them what we ask of them?
Mm-hmm.
Who will be opening all those bathrooms?
That's actually other duties as assigned. We actually, yeah, we actually have a structure already set up because there are hallways that we naturally just gravitate towards anyway. And so we'll go there and then we'll start maintaining those hallways, so. Yep. Yeah.
And so then after passing time, they're all going to be locked again?
That is correct, because where do we want our kids? In class, what do we want them doing? Learning, right? Like that's, yes.
I look forward to not talking about bathrooms.
Makes two of us.
As we kind of go through and so
Yeah.
I really hope that this is positive improvement and that the students take ownership over that and we are on our way to a great school culture.
Yeah. How about this, I don't think it could be worse. Unless I came up and said, we're not opening any bathrooms. Now someone just heard that.
Yeah, right.
Just kidding, yeah, that was the soundbite. All right, any other questions you have for me? Awesome, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very excited to be kicking off this year.
Can I, just, I just want to acknowledge the work our, our building leaders have done over the summer because they do get some opportunity to unplug and do, you know, the vacations and things that people need to do, but they've been at it really hard, as hard as I've ever seen a group of principals. And I'll also say, leaders is broader than that. So Principal Ochaki mentioned his teacher leaders and we've had that curriculum. We had boxes and boxes of curriculum and we had volunteers coming in to sort through that. So it just speaks to the commitment of our, all of our, all of our staff in prepping for the return of our students. So shout out to our, our building principals and everyone who's helping them. Because I know as principal, I could never have done it on my own. And so you really do rely on a, like they say, it's a cliche, but it does, it takes a village. And so really excited about the work that's gone into the prep for the school year.
Absolutely. Excited to kick off to a great year. All right, up next, we have our public listening, which always meets at the first meeting in the month at 4:15, right here at City Hall. And it can also be submitted through our district website at sspps.org. We do not have any public listening submissions for this meeting, but always looking for, to encourage our community to reach out to us as well. And next I will turn it over to Vice Chair Monica Weber for our committee of the whole update.
Okay, we had our committee of the whole meeting, which meets the hour before the, before the public meeting, which is also a public meeting at 5 o'clock. One of the, I don't want to say exciting because it's not, it's not an exciting topic, but it's a reality-based topic for the 21st century schools that we are in, is we got a safety and security update. And I want to really commend both Superintendent Zambrino and the entire safety team that has gone through, the I love you guys is the foundation that we have used to create more of our safety platform. And when we're speaking about safety, we're talking about our, is there a medical emergency in the school? Is there a need to go on lockdown? Is there a need to, like, do the people for a tornado drill fit in the space that you say 80 people for a tornado drill actually fit in? And actually like running the process of, no, we, we can't fit that many students in this facility? Or we can? You will see when you go into any of our buildings now and any of our classrooms, this wonderful little design that is going to tell people what are the levels of security that we are in, whether or not it's a, just hold everyone in their space because something is going on, but it's not an emergency. We just need everyone to stay put, all the way down to emergency procedures, lockdown procedures. It's just the reality of school-based life that we live in. But I know that in previous times when we've asked questions about what's our plan, there were many mixed messages. And so I really do want to commend all the leadership for going through and saying, we need to have a plan, because if you don't have a plan, your plan is to fail. And so now we have a plan to kind of go through the various steps. And so we got an overview of that, which, there'll be more communication coming out for parents. There'll be more communication coming out for what do all of these things mean? But it was a really great discussion. This also links to a portion of our overdose medication policy, which was required by new state law that came through this past year. And want to thank all the people in the district that have worked, that we are now in compliance with state law, which when they pass a bill in May and say, you have to have this all done in a very short period of time, you're like, oh, oh, okay. And we have. So again, we have some tremendous staff in our district who put in lots of extra time in making sure all the processes and procedures and plans are in place. And as a government bureaucrat myself, I love a good plan and I love a good procedure. And so just the fact that we have that, I know makes me feel more confident in that. We also talked about some other fun like election details for the special election that we have coming up this year. So everyone, this year, there will be an election in South St. Paul. I know we don't normally have odd year elections, we're having one this year. And you'll also be notified, more information about that coming out for, to fill the remainder of the school board term for my member who passed away. We also gave some, some committee updates of various committees that were on. And that was it. So it was a very educational meeting. And again, I want to thank all the people who put in all the hard work for that. Also want to thank our great partners at the city because we have learned more about property transfer and ownership than I'm sure we ever wanted to know when it comes to easements and drainage and things. And the city was a great partner in finally concluding the Jefferson property transfer and all of that. So just thank you to all the people at the city, also for their great help on that issue.
Excellent. Thank you, Monica Weber. Next, for our next report, I will turn this over to Dr. Zambrino for some highlights around the district. I'm sure filled with excitement for what's to come.
So much positive energy in the, in the district today. Absolutely one of the best days of the year. And we, welcome back all staff today. So we had, at our sites, they had all staff kickoff and then, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment, but then we all gathered today at the secondary building. So lots of fun, lots of energy and excitement, as we've heard a little bit already tonight, just the hard work that people are putting in to making sure we're ready to go with the kids next week. As we think about getting ready to go, I shared this last time, I'm going to keep reminding folks, please, 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 if you can, get into our Infinite Campus parent portal. So Infinite Campus is what we call our student information system. We love acronyms. I know Nikki, you love a good acronym, SIS, Student Information System, right? But that is our student information system. We really want people to get in and make sure we have the right information because that is where we pull information for other communication tools around email addresses, phone numbers, et cetera. So please make sure to get in there. You can find more information on our website if you need help. You can also talk to your school or your teacher. With that, again, I talked about how Infinite Campus is something we use to pull information. So Parent Square is a communication tool. We get that information from campus. What Parent Square does allow us to communicate directly with our parents. It's, it's really nice if you have kids, some of our parents might have a student at Capoja, at the middle and at the high school. By having that app, it's one spot where any communications from any of the schools goes into that versus multiple different, like I know I have kids in different schools and I get texts from different numbers. And two of the kids' school starts with a C, so I always have to look, is that Capitol Hills? Is that Central High School? Because CH and CH kind of look the same to me when they come across. So really great communication tool. Also, as we have people get in there and set their language, teachers can actually send a message in English. But if the parent's preferred language is Spanish or Hmong, it'll translate that for them so that they can communicate in their preferred language. So really want to make sure we have that app installed and that we've got your, your proper information. We know this is a time of year where families are spending a lot of money on school supplies. And so I just want to make sure that our families are aware that Minnesota has two tax relief programs to help parents with children in grades kindergarten through 12th grade. So there's the K-12 education subtraction and the K-12 education credit. And you need, the biggest piece is right now, if you're purchasing on them, save your receipts so that when you go back to file your taxes, you can take advantage of that. Again, more information in the news section at our website, sspps.org. All right, so like we said, the start of the school year. So here is our group of new teachers. They were in with us last week, actually, I think they were Monday through Thursday they were here. Amy Winter, who's our new executive director of educational services. Dr. Burkhart, who's in student services along with their teams, put together just tons of helpful information. We had our instructional coaches there on hand, they're, they're new as well, but they were leaders in this space even though they were new, our principals, others. It's really everybody wrapping around our new teachers, making sure that they are successful as they start out with us. They got to do a bus tour around town, so I always enjoy that. I feel like I pick up some new information every time I get the, the bus tour. So Mark Westfall, who's a social science teacher at the middle school and of course lives in town, did a great job with the tour. He's already one of those people who's making notes for next time. He's already one of those people who's making notes for next time around, so, but I thought it was great and we learned a lot. Just making sure they're ready to go and have a, a great start to the school year. They're a talented group, as we heard earlier. They're not all new teachers, they're not all new to the profession, so it's a great mix. Today, I mentioned earlier, we had our opening day kickoff. So we gather all of our staff. You know, I love, you know, obviously, when you all interviewed me for a job, I was also interviewing you and I was so excited to get an opportunity to be in a small but diverse district where kids get that real-world experience. But how cool that you can gather everybody in one space together to kick off the year. So at one point, a few years back, I was kicking off the school year with 21 schools. Never going to be able to get everybody in one space, just not, not even in the realm of possibility. So super fun that we could all come together and gather. We had a lot of people who put in work for that, so our clerical staff, our buildings and grounds, just to set it up, set up hundreds of chairs and rearrange the whole space, get the technology up, the technology team. Dinette did a fun trivia thing, so we gathered up some fun trivia. So I'd learned some things, like I did not know that he's called Stumpy, our resident stump who gets dressed in different costumes. I guess I wasn't tracking social media very well. So again, learning some things as I go here. Had a great kickoff keynote from Hugh McCutcheon. He's the Assistant Athletic Director at the University of Minnesota. But he has worked with many, many just winning teams and winning cultures and shared some insights related to that. And as I came into the space thinking, like, we did so much last year, we really just wanted to highlight and showcase all of the great things that our buildings had done. Like even, like I asked Dory over Nutrition Center, she was like, "How many meals are served last year?" Over a half a million between breakfast and lunch. Our grounds team, I mean, 90 inches of snow that they cleared last year. And I mean, just like, it goes on and on and on. And then the great work our teachers and our clerical and others are doing. So really a day of celebration and the energy was really positive. I did take some advice from my wife, said, "You know, they'll probably like some time back in their classrooms." So tried to keep it short enough to get them back to their rooms for our teachers. So really fun, really positive, great energy going on in the district. All right. This is a fun one, too, I shared with them. So we, when I interviewed, I didn't know there was some already kind of having the similar idea in-house, but I talked about, you all had asked me about enrollment. I said, "Well, we got to have a Packer package so that as soon as a kid's born in town, we send them some information." Well, kudos to our community at an early learning team because they have now created the Packer onesie that will be part of our, our Packer package. So we can get them, you know, we say, "Once a Packer, always a Packer." Let's get it right at birth and get that started. But also in that package, we want to make sure that families are aware of, like, and one of the things I share a lot is how much I enjoy, you know, we're a special school district, the city and the, and the district are one and the same. And we are not just a pre-K-12 organization. It's from birth through adulthood. And so wanting to make sure when families have a baby, they know we have amazing early childhood family education, screening services. If there's concerns, your child may have a disability, we're great partners right from the beginning and all the way to the end. So excited to get these onesies out in the community. You know, I wish we would have had it sooner, but you know, maybe we can get some grown-up size onesies or something that people are feeling jealous. I don't know.
Tell me the one for Asher.
All right. So just with, want to make sure some dates are on the radar. We are, again, gearing up. So we have elementary schools having the Family Connection. So on August 31st, Capoja and Lincoln are welcoming in first or fifth grade families. September 5th and 6th, they're going to do the kindergarten. We have that rolling start, which we'll show here, and we've been talking about before. And then September 5th through 8th, the preschool parent meeting and orientation. You should have received information from the school, so they're, they're scheduling those. If you haven't received anything, just give the school a call and, and see, maybe there might be somewhere we don't have the right contact information. So want to make sure families are aware of that. And then Secondary Family Connections, more of an open house style with our secondary building and the CLC on August 1st, from 2:30 to 6:00.
August 1st.
Sorry? Did I say it wrong?
No, I'm just saying August 1st.
It should be September 1st.
Oh, thank you. Good catch. September 1st. Our slide didn't roll the right, I'm like, what did I get wrong? I read it right, just wasn't the right month on there. Thank you, Nikki. September 1st, from 2:30 to 6:00. And then on September 1st, from 8:30 to 12:00, the middle school and high school have some scheduled time. So again, you should have received information directly from the sites, and if you haven't, reach out to them. And I did say we have our rolling start, so September 5th, first day for 1st through 5th, 6th, 9th, and anyone new. Give them that first chance to be in the building. And then on the September 6th, we'll bring back 7th and 8th and 10th and 10th through 12th. September 7th, first day for kindergarten, and then the 11th for preschool. And then I just mentioned our ECFE classes that we have available, those start on September 25th. So we are just rolling and excited to get going. As always, our meeting material is available on our website, so you can go on our website and review past meeting agendas or even watch the videos. And then to stay tuned, please follow us on any of your favorite social media platforms. Thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks for the backup, Nikki.
Oh, good catch. I'm pretty proud I was paying attention.
I absolutely love that beginning of the school year energy and I think there's so much to be excited about. We got a lot of work to do this year, both with staff and students, and I just love that energy that kind of comes in. Up next, we have our consent agenda items that are typically financial claims, staffing and personnel in nature. These items have been presented in the board packet and have already been discussed and explained and do not require sort of further discussion at this time. I am looking for a motion for our consent agenda items.
Some moves?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? And the motions it carries for our consent agenda items? We do not have any policy items under review tonight. We have two business items in front of us. First, looking for a motion for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the North School, the high school, North Field Agreement.
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, I invite Brady Hoffman up.
Good evening. So this is a long time coming. So back in 2021, the school board accepted a purchase agreement to sell the Jefferson property to the city of South St. Paul. As part of that sale, the city was going to transfer ownership of the North Fields to the district. In order to do that, there was a lot of legal work that had to be done. They had to conduct some surveys, secure legal descriptions and get the lot splits properly to be able to transfer the property to the district. And we are now at the final step in the process, and that is to approve this permanent drainage and utility easement for items that are already in the ground. So once this is approved, that'll finalize the transfer of the property to the district.
Excellent. We've had a lot of discussions about the North Field along the way, but any further questions from the board? Just want to thank the city for being great partners in this and sticking with it through all of this with you. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That the motion carries. Excellent. Our second item under our business items tonight, looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution for counting write-in votes for the local elective office. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion? Lisa, do we want to give kind of an overview on what's there?
Sure. So this resolution coming before you this evening is new legislation that was passed this year, and it is allowing districts and city officials to, when they are conducting an election for, like, city council or school board, that they will not need to individually tally the write-in votes unless that number exceeds the number of the person on the ballot that had received the vote. So like, if, for example, if Wendy Felton was on the ballot for school board position and she received 50 votes and we only, and the write-in vote total for all write-ins were only, like, 25, we would not need to go in and sit and sort out exactly who was voted for, for each of those individual write-in votes.
Excellent. As we have gone through this for the special election, we compared this to sort of a peeling onion of all kinds of things you have been diligently taking care of for us along the way, and I just want to express my appreciation for that. Will you please call a roll for a roll call vote?
Director Lala Burdi.
Yes.
T. Felton.
Yes.
Director Weber.
Yes.
W. Felton.
Yes.
Claflin.
Yes.
Chair Raj.
Yes.
And that's six yeas.
Motion carries. That brings us to board member reports. And that can be from committee updates or where we have seen a passion within the district. I will start all the way down with Wendy Felton.
Okay. First, I want to say congratulations and happy 30th anniversary to Capoja Education Center as they start their upcoming year. It was really great. I remember when, when that building was being built back 30 years ago, because I grew up living right across the street from the Washington School. So our family, of course, watched the Capoja building being built the entire time that it was going up. And then also a thank you to Ms. Hetty Su Woo, as she's the one who elected that the school be named Capoja Education Center. So we always thanked Ms. Woo for that. And another thing that's going on for Capoja, as was already mentioned, their Family Connection Day, which is this Thursday, the 31st, will be from 10 until 6:00 p.m. They will be having food trucks there. So if families do go to Capoja for any of the events to meet with the staff members, there will be food trucks there if they want to have, have a snack or a meal. And also for Lincoln Center, I want to say a personal thank you and congratulations to Jen Sexhour as becoming our Assistant Principal. I've known Jen for a while. My grandson had her as, as his teacher and she was a wonderful, wonderful staff member when he was in there. And also for Lincoln Center, they will be having a fundraiser for their, for their class in, in all of their, in their buildings. It will be Tuesday, September 12th, from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Culvers Restaurant in West St. Paul on Marie Avenue, which is kind of right behind the Target store. So they will be, they will be getting, earning money from all of, all of the people that go to Culvers that night and, and mention that they are in support of the Lincoln Center. And also I want to put out a huge congratulations to some of our middle school students. Their artist winters at the Minnesota State Fair. There was a K-12 visual arts competition program at the state fair that many of our students who, who did some artwork, it was submitted to the, to the fair. And we had six students from grades six and eight who won an award from the Minnesota State Fair. So we congratulate them for their prizes and how exciting I'm sure that they are to be so honored for us. And also, as was mentioned by Mr. Ochaki, also at the high school, we have what we call Packer Spirit Wear, which also Dr. Zambrino had mentioned about that little, little outfit that was so cute. If you are interested in ordering and wearing a South St. Paul Packer shirt outfit, you can go onto the district website, look under high school, and it's called Packer Spirit Wear, where you can order it. So it is, there's a, I looked it up, there's a lot of nice, nice clothing on that website. And last but not least, I want to put out a huge welcome and thank you to our students and our staff and our families here in South St. Paul. And of course, we want to welcome the graduating class of 2024. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Tim Felton.
Yeah. So this year was a, was a nice big year for the South St. Paul Open. They had their golf tournament and they netted over $40,000, which was a hugely successful year. And that South St. Paul Open Board does great work. We have the chairman in attendance this evening, Mr. Mark Duffy. So nice job, Mark. Next year, I believe, is the 50th anniversary.
Oh, my gosh.
So that's a big year. And then I just wanted to announce that this year's Kari Petrazuski Volunteer of the Year recipient is Angela Becker. There'll be a get-together to celebrate Angela at the Boulevard Tavern, September 14th, 4:30 p.m. Very deserving recipient.
Excellent. Thank you. Monica Weber.
Just want to welcome everyone back to another great school year and looking forward to going to some fall athletic events. The fall play this year is the Wizard of Oz. It's going to be a great year.
Excellent. And all the way down to Ann Claflin.
Yes. We had the local issues meeting on the 23rd last week. Heard from a lot of different community members, businesses around the area that have previously hosted some interns through the Tri-District Caps Program, getting ready to host interns again. It's a great chance for local businesses to partner with the school districts through the tri-district and have students come in, get some business experience, and then also get some of the tasks that are a little further down on their lists accomplished. And we've had many great relationships with the Tri-District Caps Program. There were a few dates that I think will help ease some of the concerns going into the school year. We heard from the city that construction along the front of the high school building should all be completed by September 1st. Everyone was very anxious to know that that would all be in place, ready for the start of the school year. Then we also heard that the Walkathon this year will be held at Lincoln Center. Instead of sending everybody on a 5K around the community, will be held at Lincoln on the track, so you can have a bit more of a festival at the event. That'll be September 20th, starting at 4:30. And finally, sort of hitting fall, the On the Road Again Festival will be held on October 7th. And I'd like to thank all of the staff who have been working behind the scenes this summer to make sure that we're ready for the school year. There's been so much work going on, as we heard from the principals earlier, the support staff behind the scenes, even another level. As a parent, it's easy to find the information that I'm looking for, and I hope that that's been the case for everyone else in our community. We're all ready to start this new year. I think our students will be well, well off to a new school year. Our families are ready to support them and the schools are definitely ready to open the doors.
Excellent. Nikki Oliver.
I attended the kickoff today, opening celebration, and I just was reminded, being there with all those people and that energy of starting a new school year, I was re- revalidated on how much I love this community. As a, as a former teacher, as a parent, as a grandparent, as a board member, once again, it was brought home to me how much I really love this community. And I'm, I'm just so happy for everybody, starting a new year, and the, just the energy's high. So I, I welcome everybody back next week and thank you to everyone who made this, this day possible today.
Wonderful. Thank you, Nikki, for also expressing your gratitude to our community today. Did a tremendous job in doing so. So excited for the year. Tim, it was also a good night for the Duffy family as we're also welcoming a head baseball coach into the mix tonight as well. So congratulations there. But I want to thank everyone who is serving the youth of our community through our schools this year. I'm excited for what we have to come and what we will be accomplishing this year together. Tonight, we will be moving into a closed session for open meeting law, Minnesota Statute 13D dot zero three for an update on teacher negotiations. So at this time, we will be moving into a closed session. Thank you, everyone.